Until about 9:30, if it does. I didn't see too many hands. It's a good stretch in the morning. Right? Try your hand. Okay. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for -- I'd like to thank our Pacifica City Council candidates for participating in our candidate forum. And thank you to all of our chamber members and those of you that are vested in our community for taking time out of your busy schedules to attend as well. My name is Brittany Conlon. I'm the CEO of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, and I am honored to also be moderator this morning. I would also like to thank Next Restaurant for hosting our forum and providing the continental breakfast. Just a quick round of applause for Next. So I'm sure that your time this morning will be well spent by everyone here this morning in participating and listening to lively and informative discussion concerning issues that are of interest to the Pacifica business community. Before we begin, I'd like to have everyone please join in pledging allegiance to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm going to just briefly go into the format of our forum this morning. When you all came in this morning, you all received two packets. One was the candidates' profile packet, great questions asked by the Tribune and published in two of our publications. So each and all, you should have a copy of that, as well as we have some of our upcoming exciting chamber events. So follow along, read at your leisure, great nighttime reading material as well. So for initial introductions, candidates, we will be introducing all of you alphabetically. Each of you will have three minutes for introductions and provide an overview of what your top concerns are for facing Pacifica and respective solutions. So the order is as follows, just in case we have to go through our alphabet. It would be Sue Terese -- oh, well, Sue DeGreed, Terese Dyer, Matt Doherty, John Keener, Mike O'Neill, Erica James, and Victor Spano. So after the introductions, we will proceed with four questions from the Chamber of Commerce. And these questions, as I read them, will be on the overhead projector in the back of the room. And each of the candidates will have a minute and a half to respond. And then we will take two questions from -- one to two questions from the audience. And at the end of the close of the forum, each candidate will have an opportunity to give a two-minute statement. And again, we'll go in alphabetical order. For the audience, we've provided index cards for all of you in the audience to write down your respective questions. We will collect them during and after the end of the forum. And if we do not get around to your questions, we will email these questions to each of you and then each of the candidates for your response. We're also videotaping our forum and providing each candidate with the chamber's four questions after the forum, and we'll email that to you. And this will give you each an opportunity to expand on your answers of any of the respective questions. We will then post both our video and our written responses on our website. And then lastly, as far as for keeping track of our time here, the three minutes for the introduction, the one and a half minutes for your responses to our questions, we've got Darlene, our president-elect, I don't know if Darlene is on this. She will be ringing the bell. And we will have Jeff Grammer, Miller O'Brien auto service, to do the 30 seconds. That's what you have left. So we're really scientific here. We've got this down. This IT is really going to go strong. Okay. So let's, without further ado, Sue DeGreed, your three-minute introduction.
Very happy to be here. I really appreciate it. Just want to say that I also miss Nick. It's very nice to be in here. I'm very sorry that he's not with me. I also want to say I love your ingenuity. And ingenuity, actually, I think is one of the parts of our challenge as we face the next four years, is taking our ingenuity and getting it to be effective to get more revenue. But one of the reasons I am running again -- why would I do this again? Is because the deep recession hit us all, and the things that we did approve many years ago, actually, did not come to fruition. Funding just ran out. It's just now that we're starting to get people more involved and asking for information on properties. So that's exciting to be seeing that happen again. That's one of the reasons. Because without revenue, we're going to have deficits. We're going to have a difficulty getting balanced budget. Obviously, a goal is a balanced budget and no deficits. That's obvious. But I really feel that it's revenue, and as long as we concentrate on revenue and how to work together to put all the wonderful assets Pacifica has to -- we get people here, but how do we get money out of their pockets? I don't think we want to be a mirror suburb of San Francisco in a breezeway to the Point Hafen Bay. I think we're a unique coastal town. We're a destination, and that's where our challenge is together. There are big issues. And my other thing, the overriding thing that started way back when to run is the protection of the public voice. It's very important to me that you, the public, all the public, and every section of this town has an opportunity to be heard, not just heard as in a public hearing. We hear. But that was one of the things I thought years ago when I ran. What the heck happens to that 30 minutes while I say that? So now I know. Not too much. What you need to do is have public forums where we can actually discuss so we can bounce things off of each other, and council can hear all of you, hear your disagreements, hear your agreements, and from there we can build. So that's one of my biggest things, to protect the public voice, to have opportunities, opportunities to do public discussions, open forums, and then we learn from there. We have the general plan coming up. I really want to continue to make sure you have that opportunity to weigh in on that. We have traffic congestion and safety issues. That's a huge issue in town. I've studied what could be alternative. I actually wasn't looking for alternatives. I was looking for what's the 21st century have to say. And there was a world congress just last week. The head of Caltrans was there, and I heard that he is now a member of the Intelligent Transportation Systems Society. In fact, I think he's the board. So there are fascinating and even new in the last week alternatives to traffic congestion management, the science construction. Thank you.
Actually, I want to keep alphabetical order.
Good morning, everyone. This seems like a long wait to me because I used to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce when I had my travel agency for 18 years, which enabled me to travel all over the world and immerse different cultures and so forth. Now, I've been a longtime resident, as we read in the paper. I've seen the women's, all-women council, the recalls, the defeat of Israel, and all the other defeats of our taxes. So the people really don't want any more taxes. And so I'm going to start off with a quote. "A community is like a baseball team. Everyone needs to come up to home plate." And that's my theory. I want to establish or implement a citizens' review panel to oversee not only of elected officials, but the department heads as well. And my reason for that is because I've been attending a lot of the city council meetings. And what I have discovered I really don't like, not only is there no transparency, there are continuous violations. And what I have done is I compile my records in newspaper clippings, and the comments from the city council meetings, and also public records. And so I caught in quite few violations, and they really don't want to meet with me, but they're going to have sooner or later to get these things resolved. But in the meantime, we need to develop. And I'm talking about developing the quarry into some kind of a convention center where we can have, you know, a lot of entertainment, sports events. We have a jewel here by the sea that's just got a sign at the highway with leads all over. And we need to contact those people and see what they're going to do with it. I mean, we can't go for another 20 years with a for-sale sign up there or whatever. You know, we've got to develop it. This will help not only Rockaway Beach, but in the meantime, while the development is going through, I would like to negotiate with them, and I'm a good negotiator because I got collective bargaining from a class five employee, also a good salesperson. So I want to use those attributes, try to induce them to let us use this open space for some activities, you know, whether it's blockfest or empty collectibles or all different kinds of events. But if we can negotiate the use of it, why, that would be really a start there. And then the seascape Palmetto, I think that should be a priority because we've already ordered the lampposts and everything. There's no need to delay that project either. And there's many other issues, but I guess my time is up, so I'll relate to the next campaign.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Doherty. My name is Matt Doherty. I was -- I am born and raised in Pacifica. I still live here. Most of my experience doesn't count from city government. I haven't run for city government before. I have held positions that have liaisons with city governments, but I've never been on city government. Sorry to speak up. And then I have had a student government experience. I was the chief financial officer for our student government at SMN State, responsible for our $2 million budget. I had a board director role on our campus's endowment, so it's a $40 million portfolio. So I do have experience in financial experience and other experience in operating legislation and listening to different groups and basically holding up in forums and all of that. What I wanted to just speak right now and tell you is that a few of my priorities for the city on this floor, and they're kind of laid out more in depth in here, but one is that I'd like to continue to preserve the coastline like we've been doing for so many years. I know it's important to us and it is valuable, so I'd like to continue to preserve what we have. I am interested in new energy and water concentration techniques, whether it be reclaimed water and utilizing what we produce, SLIM and Pase, water, reclaimed water, and utilizing it for new irrigation systems in our city to really take the full benefit of that. Another thing I like to do is attract new businesses to Pacifica, whether they be new innovative businesses for the future and kind of getting a head start on that, or helping our existing businesses. And I realize that after talking to a lot of you, there are some problems in increased rent, and maybe it's not the rent that's going up, but it's all these fees associated with the rent that's going up. So, you know, I hear you, and I'd just like to kind of talk more about that. The third thing is I'd like to repaint Pacifica's streets. You know, it's just, they need to be fixed, and there's not really anything that I see going on with that, and there's just so many that need to be replaced. So I started a street walk on my website, so if you know a street, you can go on and post the street. And then, yeah, so I've already kind of started on that initiative. The fourth thing I like to do is to manage the city budget well, and I think we can hear it from all of us. I think that's important to all of us, and we need to make sure that that is in a good order. I'm also displaying all my campaign finances and donations on my website, just as transparent as possible. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to me. I'm still learning, you know, pretty up to date.
Learning never stops.
Good morning. I'm John Keener. I'm a PhD research biologist, a small businessman, and a medical writer, but I'm now retired. My wife and I moved to Lindemar seven years ago. We were attracted to all this open space and beautiful coastline. I made opposition to widening Highway 1 in the centerpiece of Montreven. Caltrans' plan won't work to reduce congestion. At either end of the project, three lanes are going to have to merge down to two, causing bottlenecks and traffic jams. To add one lane in each direction, they're going to make the highway wider than eight lane freeway. And commuting will be a nightmare during construction. The price tag, it's $55 million, and it's not from state or federal gas tax funds, but mostly from county Measure A funds paid for by the countywide surcharge on the sales tax. To me, this is a waste of taxpayer money. I'd like to see the council turn down the $55 million and instead request funding for projects that we really need, like alternatives to widening Highway 1 that can reduce congestion and repaving our streets. In my opinion, the other major issue in this campaign is city finances. We're facing a $2.5 to $3.5 million shortfall for balancing next year's budget. This is spitting from the missing $4 million, which is mostly owed from one fund to another. I don't expect new tax measures to pass to alleviate the shortfall based on the fact that the last three were defeated at the ballot box. So the city will probably have to reduce spending. I'll hold budget forums so that we know where the money's coming from and where it's going, and so that the public is involved in proposing reductions if they're needed. It is important that this process be open and transparent with citizen participation, like all of you. That's my opinion of the most important issues facing Pacifica. Google my website or Facebook page for more detail on these and other issues.
Thank you. Might be the old one that does. So first, I'd like to thank all of you for coming. Actually, I think I probably know most of you in the room. We've shook hands, said hi, or shook a head or whatever. I know I probably, well, I've lived here about 30 years. My wife raised my family here and three dogs. And I, you know, I probably do a lot, well, I think I am the longest-serving elected official up here. I was on the school board 14 years, balanced 14 budgets, and went through severe cuts from the state. As you know, the state cut funding from schools by a lot of money, and we had to lay off a lot of people. But there are ways to strategically do that. The difficulty with the budget here in Pacifica is that, like every government agency, it is a service agency. 85% of the budget is personnel. And so you have to kind of do it strategically and work at it. And I was out at Ribbon Cutting up here for Harmony 1 the other day, and I was quite happy to hear that they are looking at about four different other projects in town. And one of them was especially refined in the fact that the guy who's going to build eight condos here in town, and one software company came in and bought all of them for corporate housing. So I think that is a real good step forward. We are starting to get the word out about Pacifica. I think that we do have some challenges, but I don't, but I also believe that we can face them as a community. We can meet, we can talk. In regards to Highway 1, I think that is just a point to start discussion. I do have some reservations myself about it. I have been in touch with the, let's see, the undersecretary of Caltrans. And as a result of that, we went to over three issues. You can see in some cleanup on Highway 1. You can see the trees getting trimmed. You saw the repair of the overcrossing by Regis Square. And there's another couple of issues that we're working on to try to make the quality of life better in Pacifica. And that is the bottom line of everything is to just make the quality of life. And we all think in a lot of respects, we have a great quality of life, the ocean, fresh air, the beaches, and I want to preserve that. That's what my, when my wife moved here, you know, when she, I can't say her age, but when she moved here from San Francisco, and she was small, barely walking. Okay, the toe chart guy's been coming out. Yeah, we got to take and do the, you know, we want to preserve what is best, but we also have to move into the 21st century in a lot of respects. I mean, I was on board and made it a high-performing district. I want to make this a high-performing city.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not going to sit. You can sit for a few minutes. My name's Eric Rashane. I'm honored to be here at this job interview. And that's what this is. This is a job interview. You're interviewing us to see who you want to represent you in city government. And it's a question about what our qualifications are. It's not an entry-level job running the city of Pacifica. It's something that requires experience and knowledge and how government works. I've been here for over 40 years in this town. I worked as a police officer for 30 years. Some of you remember me from your rearview mirror. Dave and I ran over hills together, or I ran after Dave over hills. He was usually faster than I was. I served 10 years on the school board, as did Mike, and have a real good understanding of what it takes to govern, who it takes that you have to work with. I'm very proud to have been endorsed by Terry Hill, by Kevin Mullin, by Don Morrisley, by school board members, water district members, and council members for supporting me because they know I understand how this gets done. It's not easy. One of the ironies of campaigning is that everybody comes up with quick, simple fixes to very complicated problems. And most of my response to that is, if it was that easy to fix, it already would have been done. It's not easy. We have complicated problems in this town. I was looking at this room and thinking about how many times I've been in this room in the last 40 years and how many times, how much of Pacifica history is in this room. And sometimes I think it goes back to how Pacifica was founded on a 51-49 vote to even become a city in the first place. And we became a city because we wanted to fight the encroachment of Daly City and South City as they marched to the ocean. And so we kind of were built on a negative, and maybe that's part of our DNA, and that's why we always argue with each other. But that can be a positive. This community is full of passionate people who really care about our town. And that means that Mark Steckart is no less passionate about Pacifica than how honored. They may not agree, but you can't do anything but respect and honor their passion. Was that Mark? Man, this is everybody.
Okay, technical difficulty right now, 30 seconds, but we'll give you 40.
Thank you. It's a complicated problem. We need to work together. We need to listen to each other. We need to respect each other. It's possible to disagree without being disagreeable. We're following a national trend. We're just yelling at each other, and that doesn't work. We have to listen to each other. We have to figure out how to move the community forward. We have to understand what it costs to run a community. All of you as business people understand, you have overhead, you have expenses, you have an income. That's what we have to understand and move forward together.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming, and thanks to the chamber holding this event. A lot of you I know, some I don't, and I've lived in Pacifica on and off for the last 20 years. I lived in Valley Margar in the 80s, and I own a home in Fairmont at the north end of town since 2008. I became involved in Pacifica because just when I could see that the stores were empty, the newspaper was filled with problems such as budget deficits, and I wanted to get involved. My occupation for over 20 years was working in local government, up in Daly City, in four different positions, in community development, city planning, public works, and lastly, economic development, which is bringing businesses to town, assisting existing businesses to stay in town, and directing investors to vacant land or shopping centers where they can open businesses or develop new dreams and jobs for residents of that city. I want to do that here. I'm retired now. I'm working as a real estate consultant, assisting developers from all over the world. And there is a lot of problems with Pacifica, and I've been out there finding out from the people, and people are concerned about a couple of things. One is the city's missing $4 million. People are very, very upset about that. How could the city lose $4 million? They want to find it again. Beach Boulevard. In 1991, I went to a charrette that was being held by Mike Crabtree and John Hill, if any of you remember those guys, at the Sharp Park Library, and they're saying, what are we going to do with this? Here we are in 2014. The place is still an attractive nuisance, an eyesore, call it what you will. The city really needs to sell this property. I brought an offer on Beach Boulevard. I understand there have been other offers. The city has not acted on them. Let's sell this property. And I think that that could fill some of the $4 million budget deficit that was lost. Chamber of Commerce is a business group, and what kind of business person would invest in a city that is diminishing in population? We need growth. We need growth. We need some people move here. We need to have some development here, and I support that. And my time is up, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so actually, Matt, can you hold on here? So we're going to go on to our first question, and question number one, and again, it's up on the screen and back. So question number one is, "Pacifica has a reputation for not being friendly to developers for attracting new business to Pacifica." And this is a two-part question. Again, 90 seconds to, for your response. And if you don't get around to responding to all of it, you have an opportunity to write it in when we send you an email question. Do you see specific development projects in Pacifica that will help move the city forward and sustain Pacifica's future? Number one. If so, what would you do differently to encourage, support, and or move projects quicker through the process that would facilitate change of this perception? And I'd like Matt Doherty to start off.
So the first part of the question, are there specific development projects? Yes. Beach Boulevard being one of them. The entire Palmetto area can definitely be worked on, all the empty lots over there. I think Fairmont Shopping Center doesn't get looked at a lot, but I think that can even be looked at. The quarry is an interesting thing. It's not an easy fix or anything, but I think that maybe a combination of some mixed use of property in there can be a good hub for people to come through and see that we're doing a lot in the city. The, those are the specific development projects that I've just seen and kind of heard people eager to start. The second part of the --
What would you do to encourage?
Oh, and what would I do to encourage them? I think the first step would be consultation with the local businesses in that area. I know just from the highway widening thing, there's all these businesses right over here that I don't know if I've gotten to talk to yet. So I think that consultation with the businesses and the local people around them, and just holding up in forums and realizing what is helpful for the city to have, and what are people's opinions about them, and listening to them, and get things done the right way. It might take a little longer, but in the long run, it'll be there.
Well, first of all, I went to the urine patient the other night at the police department, and I asked a question, when are we going to put the for-sale sign up at the old wastewater plant? I thought that the EI orders and all that were taken care of, and I was told, no, it's still in front of the postal commission. So that building is deteriorating because I go to every city council meeting, and I know the mold on there, and the windows are deteriorating. So we need to clean that building up, you know, let a developer even think about putting anything in there. And we need to have more assisted living. I'd like to resurrect the one that failed because of lack of corum by our city council people. Like to talk to those people. I'd also like to see if there could be any affordable housing or low housing by consolidating some of our departments. Because you talk about greenhouse gases. We've got buildings scattered all over. We've got City Hall. We've got public works. We've got Park Beach Recreation. We're paying all these utilities in five different places, in the senior center. Why not consolidate them and sell those properties off for maybe some affordable housing or any other kind of housing?
I don't see specific development projects in Pacifica, but I'll tell you what kind of development I would support, and that's what's termed smart growth. And by that, I mean developments that are vertical rather than horizontal. So, and they're located along our main transportation corridor, which is probably Highway 1. And they are dependent, however, on prior transportation infrastructure. transportation infrastructure. And in our case, that would be mass transit and vast improvement in the bus system. So, that's what I see for growth for Pacifica.
Oh, no, we're not alphabeticalized right now.
Oh, so she's confusing me. Punishing me for knowing alphabetically. This is, again, not a simple, snappy, quick solution. I've been working as a member of the Library Foundation with the city and the county and our state officials to develop Beach Boulevard project. It's not something that happens overnight. It's taken three years to get the zoning changed, to get the approvals that are necessary. And the final step is the California Coastal Commission, which is another bureau of city all into itself. And once that gets done, then the project will have all the entitlements to make it a very saleable, attractive project for developers. It's failed. The developers that have tried before have failed because none of those things were done. But at this point, once we get the approval from the California Coastal Commission, all the permits will be in place, and it'll be a very attractive property for a library which will act as a keystone for development in Palmetto, a hotel, a restaurant. And that's the kind of development that can move us forward. I think in terms of streamlining projects, we need to look into technology. There are communities that have online permit approval where you can do everything you need to do online, and it's much faster, much quicker, and involves... It's cheaper as well. So, there are things we can do to make it easier. Thank you.
Development, specific developments. Right now, we are, as I said, coming out of recession. So, specifics, I'm not sure. Eric just mentioned about the library on Beach Boulevard. That is city property. The RFP is being held up because we have to wait for the coastal commission to check it out, but it's all set to go. There have been proposals for that area in the past, and they didn't come to fruition. So, why is that? As a council member, I have asked, what happened to the Swenson Hotel Conference Center? They had the exclusive rights for at least forty years. I don't know. My concern is that they did come to council one time and claimed that the underground parking was not working forward, moving forward as quickly as they thought because it's more squishy-squishy under there. No surprise, I guess. And then the Marquette, I actually tracked down Mr. Marquette for their development, and they had public forums in the sharp park area, and people said, we came here to kick you out of town. So, specifics, they are coming. I think that Walgreens came at that time and other weak council-approved, like eight or nine developments. Specifics are coming. And to move the projects quicker is just, you know, make ourselves a really great destination because that's people come, the city is vibrant and positive.
There was an article in the Pacifica Patch a couple of years ago about Eric Burns and the search spot and the rigors of getting a project approved by planning and building. And I think that that article is a roadmap of what we need to correct here in Pacifica. The coffee shop in Lindemar Shopping Center, another example. I understand that they've been having problems with their permits. Pacifica sends building permit applications out of town to a consultant. It takes additional time. These are street mining suggestions that other people have brought up over the years, but we haven't got to them. We need someone to push them along, and I hope I can do that. Beach Boulevard, yes, is being approved by the coastal commission, but the coastal commission is understaffed, and they're taking their time. When I was economic development coordinator of City of Daly City, we had a coastal project. The developer was trying to get ahold of the coastal commission to meet with them. The guy refused to meet with them. So, I called the governor's office of economic development, and they facilitated the meeting. For our coastal projects here, we need to get the governor's office involved. We need to get Jerry Hill involved to kick and scream to get the coastal commission to ask because they're a very laconic, slow organization, and that's how they need to be dealt with. Thank you.
In regards to the question of a specific project, I don't know of any specific project, but what I would like to see is that the infrastructure is improved. An investor comes down into Pacifica, drives down Palmetto, and drives down other streets and sees this town can't even take care of its streets. There's empty storefronts. The streets are bad. Then, of course, we take them to the first town, Lindemar Boulevard, which is looking really good. But there was a reason when we were interviewing the new city manager, Lori Tinfo, the city council interviewed her at the police station because that's the nicest building in town. And it is something councils aware of. We all live, we drive these streets. We all live here. We see the issues. But I think it's good for our spit shining Pacifica is something that we can really look at. I think it'll also show the public that the city can do something better more than one, more than changeable. You know, when I was on the school board, we remodeled seven schools, set on time, on budget. We also negotiated property sales that actually turned thirty million dollars of bonds into sixty-eight million dollar projects for the schools. So, I've done it before as part of a board with the school district. I could do it again. And in regards to specific projects, I'll call.
Okay, I'd like to take a couple of questions from the audience. Anyone who'd like to raise their hand and ask a question? Okay? I'm going to get Tom waiting in the back here.
My name is actually Tom, I'm not Tom waiting in the back. My question is, if the best offer in terms of both short and long-term revenue gains for the city for the Beach Boulevard site was for the property without the library and/or the pump station, would you support it?
And we'll just start from the end here with Victor.
I support a new library in Pacifica. However, I'm not sure everybody in town does, especially if Sanchez is closed, and there's no library services there. A lot of people are opposed to that in the south end of town. A lot of people in the north end of town go to Cerro Monte. A lot of people in the east end of town go to Orange Park in South San Francisco. So, the question is, is a library a kill killer or, you know, vital for this property? I'm not so sure. I would entertain an offer for the entire site and maybe find another site for the library. That's my position. Thank you.
Yeah, I sort of agree with Victor, and the simple reason is with the sea level rising now, we may be too close to something to have a library in the near future. You know, when we're talking about books and deterioration of the building itself, I don't think that's the ideal place. I'm for a library, but I think it should be more centrally located, maybe in the Elmar area. If we would have developed the quarry, we could have had one there with the town square. But I don't think we can dictate to a developer as to what he's going to put there. Now, we have our own ideas of a restaurant, a library, and so forth, which is good. But I think our main concern is, let's get the developer first and then negotiate with him as to what we can do. But I'm not, I'm not against the library. I, you know, it just, I don't think that's the ideal location.
Thanks. Tom, your first question about the pump station. My understanding in the city meetings, it was costing in excess of four million dollars to move the pump house. So, I don't think, unless a developer wants to take that cost on, I think we're stuck with having a pump station on that site because that, removing it was definitely something we looked at. As far as the library, you know, I've been astonished to order a new library. I think it's a great need in this community for the residents, and it's a great economic engine. But I also think it's important not to let it search for perfect. Derail pretty good. There is no perfect site. There is no ideal location. Such a thing doesn't exist. And if that's what we wait for, we won't ever do anything in this town. So, we have to move forward. If a developer comes in and offers us so much money for that site that we could buy another site for the library, I'm not against looking at that. I think we have to be open to options. The reason that we've laid out the property the way we have is to make it saleable. So, if that works, that's fine. If somebody comes in with a truckload of money and has another idea, that's fine as well.
Okay, well, the question was, would you support a deal that did not include the library and the pump station for the Beach Boulevard coverage? And I would if it complied with all the suitable regulations. The pump station smells. And, you know, I think that's going to be an impediment to selling the property. And so, we've got to sell that. On the library, I am personally opposed to it because it involves the sale of Sanchez and Park, of course. And I don't want to see Sanchez closed. But I would put the bond issue to Pacificans. I think it's an important issue, and I think everybody should vote. So, I hope that made myself clear.
All right. We have to be very careful about making statements about what we're going to do about properties because it all depends on the detail. And the pump station, sadly, we've tried to get rid of the pump station numerous times. The amount of money is incredibly high. As was mentioned, the library is essential. A good, strong library. Twenty-first century libraries are very involving of the entire community. It's definitely an asset in public education. It is a free public education. So, can't underestimate the value of a, of a library. So, I think a lot would depend on what does come forth with a developer that would possibly then, you know, we also have other city property off Francisco. Maybe there would be a way of working that out, getting the money. We got money from Beach Boulevard. We could certainly be able to pay for a lot more. And once again, it's all on revenue. My major concern, which I bring up constantly, is have you watched Beach Boulevard, the apartment complex across the street? I have constantly complained about those two. One has started to become light blue, slow as ever. But how, if I were an investor, would I trust to invest there? So, I think as a community, we really have to watch how things look. And I'm after the city all the time. So, there seems to be some impediments to getting code enforcement to get that done on that apartment.
Regardless, I think we need to get started on something. I think that some project there should be looked at, whether it just be an open bid with a deadline out for interested parties to come and forward and just kind of speak about what they'd like to do there. I think a library is essential to have in a city. I've been to the Pacifica library numerous times, and the South City Library growing up. And I know that it can be a trough for other children and even adults in other cities if we had a nice one in Pacifica. So, I can see that. I know our library right now is cutting its hours and needs to be restructured. I mean, that shouldn't happen anyway. So, I think that we need a library that can withstand pressure from budget tests. And whether that be a new library or just renovating or a new one and getting the funds that it needs to survive, I think that would be good, too. The other thing I like to do is, I don't know. The other thing I like to do, though, is to make sure that the businesses there and the community that lives in that sharp park area is involved in the process. Because I'd like to see something there that draws people into the city, and there's something there that also is a need for our city individuals as well. I don't want it to only be a trough for other people to come to our city. I'd like it to be a place for...
So, it's good that we have Mike last. We've got to get a new batter.
Okay. So, everybody hear me? Tom in the back corner, can you hear me? Okay, good. Everybody. So, anyhow, to Tom's question, yes. I would look at any, any offer that was coming to the city that's bona fide, written offer, proof of issue, proof of ability to close, I would look at. Okay? But again, as Sue said, it devils in the details. In regards to the library, that might not be the best location, but the studies are showing an investment in a library, every dollar invested returns back four. Okay? We have, the neighborhood has looked at this project, been part of it, and is basically supportive of this concept of the townhouses with the restaurant. The city wants the restaurant and the hotel. One of my solutions would be to try to zone Beach Boulevard commercial. Where else in the state of California do you have a city, so, a street so close to the ocean that you don't have some sort of wharf or business, you know, restaurants and stuff like that on there? If there's cementing blocks there, that would be a draw to support Palmetto, the hotel. And I know one gentleman that has vacation units there, that things that could use like Airbnb. Move into the twenty-first century and try to accommodate the new lifestyle, so to speak, there. But the library, I think, is important to both seniors and kids in services to them. It doesn't have to be there. I'm open to change.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we're going to go, we're going to go on with our number two, three, and four questions from the chamber, and we're going to take questions afterwards. We want to make sure we get through these questions from the chamber. And then, again, all of you that are index cards, please write in your questions, and we will make sure that we email them to the candidates. And the candidates will also get our quote questions that we are writing, that we are asking and for your response written out. So, number two. In supporting every effort to shop local, which in turn helps increase the city's tax base, we have several local contractors that represent numerous trades in various industries throughout Pacifica that could create, be included in every RFP. This would also create more jobs locally. How important is it to you to hire local contractors? And what steps will you take to ensure that this happens on a regular basis? And Chuck, do we have the mic looking?
No.
Okay. So, you know what I'm going to ask you? Sue, I'm going to ask you to stand each candidate so you can at least have the volume of them.
Shop local, I'm very much a fan of shop local. We actually did have some sign-on businesses many years ago, encouraging people to do that. Shop local is extremely important. That's part of why we have people coming. And that's the challenge, is how do we have people to actually stop here and shop? And totally done. Oh, if we can get it into an RFP to use local contractors, absolutely. But even if you can't get into an RFP, you definitely should honor, should honor our people regardless of what is possible.
I'll be brief. The answer is really important, and we should take all the steps that we can to encourage it in any RFP for any city project, and encourage it in any project that comes through that we have approval rights over. It should definitely come here first. And to the extent that our local contractors have the skills to do what needs to be done in this town, they should absolutely be the first place that we go.
I certainly have no problem giving the local person the opportunity. I mean, I think an example, just go out the door here, look to the right, and you see Bow Pick, Roll Hill, all those projects, you know, Rockway, Donkey, and stuff like that. So, if a local contractor has the ability to do it, I, what kind of preference you would want to give them, I don't know because there are some state laws in terms of you have to take the lowest bidder, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would be fully supportive of it, but I want to codify it so that we have specific preferences for local contractors if we were going to start doing that. But I have no problem with the RFP and moving forward.
I do, too, think so, too, about using local contractors. I'd like to focus in on the shop local part of the question. Pacifica would benefit by a joint marketing program. We could get the merchants together. I live up on the hill. A lot of my neighbors don't know about Palmetto. They don't know about those stores in Pater Point. My friend and former colleague from the Economic Development Committee, Sam Kassilis, was unaware of Fairmont Shopping Center, unaware of Ramella Plaza. So, we need to better market our own businesses right here in Pacifica. So, we need to better market our own businesses right here in Pacifica and then go outside of Pacifica. Thank you.
Could you go to Matt, please?
So, I would say local contractors, but not just contractors, but services, restaurants, anything that, because we have, we do have a lot of businesses in Pacifica and we do have a lot of options to go and support our local businesses. I think it's important to shop local, but not just in these RFPs and for city stuff. But, I mean, even ourselves, this is gonna take a bigger change than doing these RFPs and these agreements just for city work. I mean, we should all be really doing this in general and shopping locally, that's the biggest change that can support these local businesses. Yes, include them in the RFP. I think that's noteworthy. I think that they should always be involved. I think regardless whether we do local work or encourage local, if we can't find them, try and find someone in neighboring town. But I think it's important that we support fair wages. I know they support, as long, you know, making sure that you're getting paid a fair wage. You shouldn't be on the streets. You shouldn't be in poverty. There's people getting paid fair wages in this city, in this county, in the state that are still living out of their cars. So, I think that's a big deal. And I think that the city can really do a big part of it with these projects, but I think that we also do it personally.
Could you give it to Charles?
Yes. I, I'm in favor of hiring local contractors. My son belongs to the Contractors Union and so I don't need to hire anybody in too many areas. But if I do, I do hire local contractors. And I wish we could stop the telephone calling from these people, the contractors out of town. Sam is lady, across the bay, all over, trying constantly to get us to remodel our bathroom, kitchens and whatever. I don't know how we do that, but I, I've tried to eliminate any of their calls and don't answer them anymore. So, there are a lot of services here that we can't, we have to go over the hill. I mean, we don't even have a movie theater. I try to get, well, type writer, I was, obsolete, that'll take my time. I try to get a type writer, but then I gotta go, you know, to State Finals or some place else. So, yes, wherever we can, keep it locally. Thank you.
Can you give it to John, please?
I support local contractors, all other things being equal. I'd like to address the shop local part of the question. The sales tax in this town supplies about 3% of our city's budget revenue, 3%. So, increasing it, you know, will help, but it's not gonna save us. It's not gonna be the be-all, end-all. So, we've gotta think of some other way. Our tax base is apartment taxes. It's more than 90% of the budget. So, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to question number three. With the devil's slide, number three. Number three, thank you. With the devil's slide tunnel and walking trail open to the public now, it has caused our highways to have massive congestion on the weekends, a commuter's nightmare leaving and returning to Pacifica throughout the week, along with being a huge safety issue. It is also a well-known fact that if the highway is not widened, that the quarry will never be developed as it will be cost prohibitive, which would drastically affect Pacifica's economic future. My, our question to you is, do you support the widening of the highway to improve safety and infrastructure, which in turn would be more attractive for development in the quarry? I'm gonna start with Mike.
Yes, I, I support the concept of the widening of the highway. I know now our traffic jam has gone from, you know, five days a week to seven days a week. And I live, I live above Terranova High School, so I mean, these hardware is now 15-minute, 20-minute jobs. I do, you know, but I do think that this, the plan that's proposed by Caltrans is a starting point for discussion. Do I, you know, it is, when you see the schemes of it and stuff like that, the schematics of it, it does look like a freeway and I think Pacifica can do better. There are certain standards that I believe have been adopted by Caltrans for Main Street USA. And I am getting more familiar with those concepts. And the person that I was working with, that I am working with up at Caltrans has actually encouraged District Four, which is where we are at, to adopt the street widening to those standards. So, that is one of the things I will be working for, is to improve the quality of the widening. But it does need to be done, something needs to be done.
Could you give it to Victor, please?
I support improvement of the highway. Improvement is a word that contains many different things, including widening. I'm troubled that so many people in the community are extremely troubled by the project. I'm troubled by the fact that they haven't had one hearing to listen to these concerns as they asked for. I think that should be granted, that we should work with Caltrans to come up with a solution for Highway One that everybody in town can live with. In some people's backyard, we need to respect that they're stakeholders and cannot interfere with their life too much. We do need to improve the highway for emergency access and that's the bottom line for me. I'd like to see that happen so an ambulance can get to someone in Valley Mar if someone has a heart attack. Thank you.
Could you pass it to Charles, please?
Yes, I do approve of the widening of the highway for the simple reason, if we don't go ahead with this situation, we may lose these Measure Eight funds and the cities down on the peninsula will be happy to get those funds. This has gone on way, way too long. I think we, we now are in an appeal at Waukesha, so we have to wait until this member for the judge's decision. But after that, I think the sooner we get on this, the better we are because it's a hazard. I mean, I live up on Cressby and the traffic is really bad in the morning, but what I discovered when, when I was coming home from Redwood City, I had to go to, I had to go to Pacific Manor and wait there for an hour before I could even get home. So, how are people able to go to City Council meetings at seven o'clock when they're not even home, they're still on the highway? So, this is very important, especially for emergency vehicles and for safe, all safety issues, I certainly am toward it. Thank you.
Can you give it to John, please?
Yeah. Well, first of all, Caltrans has filed the final environmental impact report on widening the highway. They filed that more than a year ago. And that is what we have on the table. And that's what council has an opportunity to vote yes or no on. If we want to make changes, we have to first vote that down and then start developing what our plan is. But first of all, we have to vote no on the widening. And that's my position. I'm against it.
Could you pass it down to Matt, please?
So, I think it's time that we look at fixing this traffic problem. I think it's obvious that it's a problem, safety reasons, just congestion problems, wasting people's time. I think it needs to be fixed. I think this is the perfect time to look at it and to offer these open forums and a chance for the city to talk, a chance for these businesses that are gonna be affected during and after the process to be consulted to. I think I'd like to see first low-cost alternatives to be tried out and tested to maybe see if the traffic light will work, to maybe see if some other alternatives will work. And if they don't, then we could go ahead and move forward in another project. I think that we have time. I think that Caltrans really wants this project and I don't think we're gonna lose it anytime soon, at least from all the documentations I have read. I think that if the best solution is to widen the freeway, no, sorry, the highway, I'd like to see the highway widened only enough that it needs to be, you know, eight feet per lane on both sides, sure. And I also like to see maybe some possible solutions that will, we can utilize these funds to, that will widen the highway to maybe make a nice, like, help these businesses out over here and make like a nice pull-in and like, whatever businesses they may be, like a little ice cream shop, whatever. But help, you know, make this Highway One part of our downtown, you know, like.
Could you pass it to Eric, please?
You know, when I went to school, I told me always to be careful of questions that say never and absolutely one way or the other. So, with all due respect to Courtney and the chamber, I'm not sure I agree with the premise that it says here, it's a known fact, not widened in capital letters. A lot of people think that, but I'm not sure it's completely true because we haven't really talked about it. It's the elephant in the room. I do appreciate it being raised because I think it's a question, is are we talking about highway safety? Are we talking about traffic congestion? Or are we talking about development? They're not necessarily the same things. You know, whether or not the quarry is ever developed, we still have a traffic problem. And we have to try and mitigate the traffic problem. We're always gonna have traffic. We always have. And for all of us that have been driving around in this community, we know that. It's worse now than it's ever been and it's never gonna go away. And even if we had an eight-lane freeway, it wouldn't go away because for those of you that leave Pacifica, you know plenty of time used, it's still in a parking lot at eight-lane line. So, to be clear on what it is we're trying to fix. And I think the discussion about the quarry and development is tied into the highway, but it's not the same thing. And we should have a discussion about one, we should have the general plan discussion, which can include what we do with the quarry in the future and how we fix the highway in the meantime. Thank you.
Right.
So, this has been on the books for a long, long time and that's part of the issue. A couple of years, about four years ago, I started Googling around for congestion management issues. And there are, and there was a gentleman in Denmark that I said, is this reality or is this theory? He said, oh, no, you just have to find somebody that can do it. And so, then I found NSYNC and I've been speaking to NSYNC and also at the Monterey Congress two years ago, I sat next to the panel and learned that Siemens also does this sort of thing. I need to get for you the document that is a scathing report on Caltrans. And part of the things they complain about Caltrans is that their mindset is still in the 19th century, they were a little more drive, in my opinion, which was the 20th century. So, even in this last week, I told you there was a world congress, it's only the third world congress, not the 10th. It was in Detroit, it moves around the world, and it is intelligent traffic congestion management systems. And even since then, there's another newer using the GPS. So, traffic congestion management and safety issues are definitely paramount and can be, I, achieved, I believe, by looking. So, I think we should be open-minded and look because construction is gonna hurt us.
Can you pass it down to Victor if you're gonna start off number four? Actually, I'm just kidding, I need, this is me. Got ahead of myself. Okay, so, number four is, we, in putting this question together, we really decided we needed some background. So, bear with me, it's probably about a good minute of lead-in to our question. And it's regarding the TOT and the hotel business improvement district. So, historically, the transient occupancy tax on hotel rooms was designed to go towards visitor centers and bureaus to promote tourism. In the past, the city allocated $40,000 to the chamber. In 2003, the city's funding was reduced to $10,000. At that time, the Pacifica Hotels formed a Hotel Business Improvement District, otherwise known as the HBIT, which generated a marketing fund by charging a self-assessment of a dollar per room per night. Originally, these monies were used to advertise and promote only the hotels. However, over the past few years, the chamber has expanded the hotel's efforts to promote the city of Pacifica and is currently the only professional entity promoting Pacifica. The city has greatly benefited in collecting more TOT year after year as a direct result of the chamber's marketing efforts, coupled with the turnaround of our economy and an increase of the TOT from 10% to 12% in 2011. Over the past five years, the TOT received from the hotels went from $740,000 to $1.3 million. In 2014, the city eliminated all funding to the chamber for promoting Pacifica. My, our question is, do you see it in the city's best interest to partner with the Pacifica Chamber and hotels in promoting our city? And then, the next question is, if elected, would you consider restoring either a percentage of the TOT or a dollar amount to enhance the marketing efforts made by the chamber and the hotels? And who would like to start off on this, like, the very most important question to the Chamber of Commerce and the hotels? Victor.
I went to grad school at University of Southern California and I studied real estate development there. And one of my classes was hotels. Hotels are very price-sensitive. There is something called the average daily rate. And a TOT affects that average daily rate. You might raise your TOT and the average daily rate has to go up to $2 and that's gonna affect your occupancy. I'd like to look at reducing the TOT, building out more hotel rooms in Pacifica and be more competitive in the Bay Area marketplace to create more money, which ultimately could go to the chamber to be a partner. But as it is, the cities have other priorities. They need to reduce the amount going to the chamber for joint marketing. I just see, we can go in the opposite direction by having more tourists here, having more room nights, and be more competitive against Burlingame, South San Francisco, to capture tourists both domestically and internationally.
Mike?
I have to admit, this is one of those inquiries where you have to, you know, get it scored. I think you're one of the, like, the, the, I don't get any, you know, Solomon and the baby. You're thinking, you know, you get X amount of dollars in there, you have to try to allocate it to where you think it would be best to do. Right now, we're kind of in a mode of, you know, circle the wagons. And so, the top tax, I realize, has been improved, although I couldn't really, when I asked, I didn't see any real data as to, would this effort bring this result? So, it's a lot of hens total and stuff like that, but then you can get into, okay, we support the hotels, what about supporting Lindemar Center, Reed the Square, Fairmont, and Pacific Manor? So, you start to go down the slope of where the city starts. Also, the city funds, this council has adopted, that we want an annual report, the city gets you to check, we want an annual report as to what have you done with it. So, I am open certainly to doing top tax, but I would like to see the system kind of like timed up some. And I would also like to see how other cities are doing. We don't have to reinvent the wheel and there might be some solutions out there.
Thank you. It was a long lead-up, but a really, actually a pretty simple question. And the answer is yes. I see it's, I definitely think it's in the city's best interest to partner with the chamber and the hotels to promote the city. I think the city needs to explore all the partnerships to do whatever we can to promote the city. And I certainly would consider restoring and looking at it to see how we can get the most bang for our buck. It's a pretty simple question.
Thank you. Could you say the name?
I applaud the chamber and the hotels for broadening it out so it doesn't just help hotels, but helps retail as well. And I think that's a great move. Definitely would be in favor of supporting the chamber more and definitely wanna work more with the chamber. You do realize that in June, we were making painful decisions, I mean, painful. And to get that balanced budget and work on the deficit. So, again, I'll go back to revenue. And in the revenue, we have to think about whatever we do helps the entire boroughs, including Fairmont, all of the boroughs, so that what we do in one place doesn't detract from another place. So, that's our challenge, is how to get all of our assets together, how to get all of the businesses in Pacifica, because I don't think they're all on chamber either. So, that's like a, a little, like, how do we do this? And, what am I trying to talk to? Oh, also, I've been a opponent for a long time and I don't see it happening. I really love as much support as possible. We have history and culture in this town that are untapped. We have amazing things going on and thank you to the Historical Society, to all our musicians and artists. We have a, we're known outside of our county, our city, for these wonderful things. We really have it tapped in to all of our assets. That includes businesses, hotels. hotels, our natural resources, our sports. We have sports teams for the war in here. The challenge is, how do we connect it all and make a web that works for us?
There's, there's no doubt that the Chamber of Commerce does a great job at promoting our city and the services that our city offers. And I think that it's important to continue to support that the Chamber of Commerce and our local businesses. Sue's right in the fact that there's, not every business is part of the Chamber, but I think by supporting the Chamber, you're supporting promotion of the city, marketing of the city, and then bringing people into our city. I think that the Chamber does a great job at that. I think regarding the TOT tax, I don't know enough about it to, you know, say if I'd be in support or not of it, but I want to remain competitive in the hotel marketplace, if you will, for visitors to the cities. Those are the ones that are being served in that. There are some other taxes that may, maybe better or a better way of doing this if we went down that route. But I said in my, in the newspaper, Carolina State, again, that I'd like to remain not pushing taxes and not pushing that sort of thing. I like to make sure that we're spending our money wisely right now, the money we do have. And I think I like to support looking at that first.
Oh, to John.
So my understanding is that the Chamber gets the dollar per room per night right now. And I don't know how much that is, but I think that's more than the $10,000 that they got in the budget from the city, the city has. That money is going to be really hard to turn by. It's hard to come by this year, and it's going to be even tougher next year.
Well, unfortunately, we have it at the library and all the other non-departmental agencies. But what I'd like to see is the Chamber of Commerce engage themselves with the San Francisco Convention Center. I don't think we are right now with the San Tale. And the reason I say that is because we're so close, 15 minutes to the airport, 15 minutes to San Francisco. We really want to market San Francisco because the parking is so bad there, and we have the open space. So what I'd like to see is that quarry develop into, I don't care if it's a Ritz Carlton or what, but Ritz Carlton down to Half Moon Bay is bringing in a lot of revenue for Half Moon Bay. So that's what I'd like to see, development, development, development. And then if we have the money, reinstate all these non-departmental agencies.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the audience now for questions. And Joseph.
Good morning. I'm Joseph Arasme, the managing owner of Crestwood Business Center. I just wanted to thank Courtney for arranging this meeting and a chance for dialogue. I think most of you are familiar with the, with the Crestwood Business Center project and the major role we play in the small business community in Pacifica. I want to thank the city for working on a change in the general plan. I think it's much needed. However, I think there's a major flaw contained in there as it relates to Crestwood Business Center. Our zoning is seen for the land use designation, the general commercial, providing a wide variety of different types of uses. If you've been through the center, you know what I'm talking about. We have seven retail units in front and 18 warehouse office units in the rear, which are at the backbone of the project. Channel 26 is located there. We also have some R&amp;D tenants working on federally funded location projects. We have a company reference recordings that has won three Grammys. That's big time, local here. 75 employees at Crestwood Business Center, also jobs. You know, those are very important things. Anyway, in the proposed update of the general plan, from commercial zoning, general commercial, proposals go to high-density use, which would appear to exclude or preclude many of the types of uses and businesses that we have in Crestwood Business Center. We've got a meeting with the about to become former planning commissioner, planning director in July. He feels confident that the use permit that we have, which we issued prior to completion of the project, will stand in perpetuity and we can continue doing what we're doing. However, there is a major area within the proposed change in the general plan that is not clear at all about this. So I need guidance from you guys. If we intend and want to continue doing what we're doing, our project is a real success story. I say that because it is filling a need in the city for which there is not enough space available. We have a waiting list for our warehouse units. These small businesses offer an opportunity for local residents to come shop with us and partake in our services. If we don't exist, where do they go? Where do you duplicate Crestwood Business Center? I don't think you can in the city. Okay? So my question is, we need clarification on this ambiguity. In the general plan, we tend to go forward, and our position is strongly that we have a use permit covering all these uses, and we're going to stick with it. And hopefully, it can be worked out ethically as opposed to ending it something that becomes a real sticking point. Okay? Do you have comments on this?
Okay, so your question directly is in 15 seconds or less, what would be the exact question you're asking?
Are you aware of this conflict in the general plan, and what can be done about it?
All right. Sue, I'm going to start off with you.
Thank you very much for bringing it up. No, I wasn't aware of conflict. But thank you, I really appreciate that. And very much appreciate that. Certainly be in your corner as much as possible. That's all, more reason why I like to really encourage public forums, so that you can actually say something and get a conversation going. I will follow up on it.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the details of your situation, but certainly, I think that if you have an existing zoning and land use designation, then that you should be able to keep that period.
Yeah, I agree. I think it provides a great service for the community, and the general plan is a work in progress. It's not been adopted. There's a lot of areas, a lot of concern around the community beyond your property to many other properties. And I think as the plan proceeds, we're going to have to resolve all those issues before the plant's approved.
I'm not really familiar with your property, but the general plan is not cut and stoned yet. You know, I mean, there's a lot, could be a lot of revisions, I'm sure, especially with the sea level rising and the highway widening. We're waiting for the decision from the judge in December, so a lot of that details on that. But I'd like to hear more about it. I'd like to have some public meetings, but it doesn't matter. Probably some open public meetings. Thank you.
Again, the general plan is, you know, in progress, really big document. I've now heard the issues regarding your zoning that I would fully support keeping what's there. I have no, of course, I know there's no issues, complaints, or anything like that. So I would fully support what you are now.
Yeah, I've been over there numerous times. I'm a big supporter. I mean, I've been to the police station over there. So I think, looking into it a little more, I think it's definitely a problem if they're forced, if it's, if the little know the general plan is forcing you to, you know, tear down and create high density of some sort, if I understand the question correctly. But yeah, I have the support of your business, and I think that it does create a lot of value for our city and for marketing our city.
I join the chorus. I support you. I'd like to talk to you about how we can make your project better and available to more people. I think that it's unique in Pacifica, and we need to capitalize on it and assist it. There are a lot of problems with the general plan. For instance, Skyline Boulevard improvements have been taken out of the general plan. There's tens of thousands of commuters that use Skyline, but this has been taken out of the general plan. I'd like to see that go back. There's a property on Monterey Road that the owners want to put residential there. It's been zoned, or it's been reclassified as agricultural in the new general plan. So we really need to take a look at the draft general plan before things are etched in stone. So we wind up improving our city and monitoring it.
Okay, we're going to take one other question right now. It is nine o'clock. And again, please write your questions down, and we're going to email all the candidates. So Chris.
In 1999, the Chamber was the catalyst to bring Barry Swenson to town to do a development of the old quarry. Now, I was sitting in the Chamber Council the night that the city council, two members of the city council denied the project because the contractor was two days late, bringing an additional $100,000 check to the city. Now, I look every day across the street and see this mess, and the lost opportunities of 15 years for this city. My question is, will, if you're elected to city council, or if you're on city council now, will you urge our new city manager to re-contact Barry Swenson to see if there's any viability for him to move forward after he already has done a lot of preliminary work? He did a lot of reports that were done. So that is my question.
Okay, so we'll start with Matt.
Well, 1999, I don't know much about Barry Swenson or what happened, as you probably be aware of yet. But I think that it's definitely an opportunity to look at. I think that the other developers that have all made bids on that property should all be contacted. The city manager does have a lot of work under her plate, and I know she's doing a lot right now. So I think it's in her list of stuff to do, to take a look at. And I think that we also voiced our opinion on, when we were at the police station the other night for an overview of the city budget. So I think that it's important to get something started in there, and whether we can contact people in the past that may be still interested, or just open it up again and make sure that there's, you know, to just keep it moving, because 15 years is a long time to just, if we start something, just let it happen. So.
Yes, Chris, I agree with you totally. Every time I go by there, I think the same thing, you know? And I brought this up at the orientation meeting the other night at the police station. Why did we have any contact with these people? What are their plans? You know, I think we didn't go ahead with any kind of development or what. And I intend to do it, whether I'm elected or not. I'm going to make a simple phone call and just see where we're at with that situation. Thank you.
This strikes me, Chris Nutter, our former Tribune publisher, I give him credit for this quote, that Pacifica never misses an opportunity to miss an opportunity. And we've missed plenty over the years. I think the distinction between the quarry project, or the quarry site, and for example, the Beach Boulevard project is, we don't own, the city doesn't own the quarry. The city owns Beach Boulevard. So we have control over that project. We don't have control over the quarry. It's been sold, it's been resold. And last I heard, it was on market, off the market, it seems in between. I think that we need a comprehensive plan to market our community. And really, our community needs to decide what we want to do. I mean, it's the age-old question in this town. And it's been since the day we, before we were incorporated, what's the future of this community going to be? What are we going to look like? How are we going to fund the community? And what do we want here? And that's really the question. And there are a lot of players involved, and we should try not to miss more opportunities to make our community better.
John?
Yeah. So I support a vote on any use of the quarry. It's just too controversial to say, yes, we'll develop it, no, we won't develop it. Like Eric said, I think the people of this town deserve a chance to let their voices be heard about it.
All right. Regarding the Swenson project that was approved in 1999, and given at least four allowances to continue having exclusive rights, I have asked numerous times, what was the problem? Why it never got going? I have not been able to find any records. I am definitely in favor of going to the various entities that did offer for the Beach Boulevard. The Marquette project came afterwards, and it was an excellent, very well-received by Star Park residents, which is important. And there again, the records are shoddy. So that's been one of my aims, is that there shouldn't be shoddy records. We should definitely have ongoing records, and we should look back and evaluate, not only that, how we keep our records, but also contracts. When the contracts were signed, did we all follow through on that? So that is my answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. One of the issues of Pacifica is, I mean, you know how when you're getting ready for Christmas, you pull out your Christmas ornaments, you wrap them in newspaper to keep them, right? And then you run across a Pacifica Tribune article, and you see that this newspaper is 15 years old, and it's a priority back in Pacifica. You know, I mean, develop the quarry, widen the highway, where's the wastewater treatment plant, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I, there is a process for a, to market properties. I would be very willing that when the RFP goes out, because required by law to have an RFP, that it does go to Barry Swenson, as well as a lot of other developers. And I have to cast a wide net, and we will get best offer, especially since the city has gotten the entitlements from the Coastal Commission. Okay, that has saved any developer a bunch of money, as well as saved them two to three years for development. So that was the key reason the city went to the Coastal Commission. And we've been told that it is going to be before the Coastal Commission, in November or December meeting. And one of those meetings is being held down in Half Moon Bay. All right, so thank you.
The current council in 2012, 2013 hired a consultant, I see him in this room, to develop an economic development strategy. Some, a great amount of time was spent putting that together, and unfortunately, it wasn't adopted, it was just accepted. And that's really a shame. The economic development strategy has in it the sort of goal of hiring an economic development staff person, and that hasn't happened yet. It's sort of Raj, or we're going to do the recruitment into the future. But you could say, should Lori Timfo call? I think that we should have an economic development manager to call, not just Barry Swenson, but other developers for other sites in the city that the city owns, or doesn't own. So that's my hope. Thank you.
Okay, if we're going to take one last question, again, please leave us with your cards. And I have specifically a question right here, is there are people all throughout the Seminole County and San Francisco that frequent our shops and restaurants. What would you do to, if elected, to specifically market Pacifica to these communities that do have disposable income that could really cause a wonderful uptick in our sales tax revenue generation? So Teresa, why don't you take that first?
Well, I know, by sitting in front of Safeway, getting signatures for various petitions, that there are a lot of people that do shop in Pacifica. A lot of them use our grocery stores and Pacific Manor, and Lindemar, and so forth. So I would like to get them engaged in some other areas here, you know, to, how can we promote other areas, more activity for them to come in here, you know, besides the FOG Fest? I'd like to see a monthly activity down every, every month. The FOG Fest is successful, and I'd like that committee to work with the Chamber of Commerce, and see if we can get something going here every month to bring in revenue until development becomes a reality.
Well, the best advertisement is word of mouth. And all the people that are already coming here, if they have a good experience. And all the people that are already coming here, if they have a good experience, and pass that on, that is the ideal situation.
I think the answer is that the city needs to partner with the people who are expert in marketing. City council is not a body that is designed to do marketing. It's designed to do governance, set policy for the city. I think that's where the partnerships with the Chamber come in valuable, because that's their expertise, your expertise. So we need to partner with the agencies that do this for a living, and recognize what they're good at, and recognize what council's good at, and have that to move the community forward.
Thank you. Mike?
I think Pacifica needs to really kind of define what is its market niche. I don't see, you know, people from Germany, Switzerland, the Jo, Montana, there are, I don't know if they're going to come to Pacifica, that they will go to Mere Woods, and Alcatraz, et cetera. I think we need to look at, put our target market be more comfort. During the summer, come, you know, you're 106 over there, come over here, for pool hotels. We also need to look at the ads, sporting teams. My daughter was traveling softball team, and we went to, you know, Central Valley, we went down to Salinas, et cetera. And one in Pleasanton had over 510 East, half of whom were probably, I'm not so sure, but half of whom were probably from outside the area. They patronized the restaurants, they did the hotels. When you got the bill, it was their, they had a sports complex that could handle a full tournament with 16 teams. And every month it took, and switched to a different sport. What was really key about that, and I don't know how many of you have kids that are teenagers, is they formed a JPA nonprofit, the Snack Shack, and stuff like that, where all provided jobs for the teenagers. So, met a community need of income coming into the city, met a community need for the kids to get any athletics, but met a critical need this town does not have, and that is, what does a teenager do?
I understand.
Pacifica is home to some really great and unique restaurant and retail businesses, such as Nick's, The Surf Spot, Puerto, Grape in the Fog, that actually draw people from outside of Pacifica. Retail businesses, I can't even start to name them. But we need to jointly market these businesses and restaurants outside of the city, throughout San Antonio County and throughout San Francisco County.
Thank you, and Matt?
Yeah, I think as much as we can do to support marketing our businesses would be something that I'd be in favor of. San Francisco, San Antonio counties do pass through here all the time, either where it's, you know, whether they're going to work, or going back home, or to home, or to a friend's house. So there are opportunities to grow from, just from the passerby's, that seat that go through it every day. So I think there's room there. There's also some room to partner with more organizations, more Chamber of Commerce's in the county. I know Corin's already working on it. So, I think that the Chamber of Commerce has a great job. We can all do a great job, you know, spreading word about, like John was saying. I think the sales tax, it is a small portion of our budget, and that's not where we, you know, gain a lot of our revenue. But that is a space where we can grow, as long as we're getting more retail businesses and setting up, you know, setting up people for success, whether they want to open up that deli that they've always wanted to, or, you know, just make it more accessible, more want for people to open up businesses here. And I think the later will come where we're successful in growth, yeah.
Right, it's a complex, I would say, how we get us all together to be marketing together in some way that's productive. Want to applaud the Chamber again. I know that your marketing and your website has greatly improved, it's always good, improving. The city also has it on the agenda to have our website improved, and that the two will link. And we do have budgeted already, the economic development person, it is halftime right now due to budget issues. Again, it's revenue that we need. I think we all use email, and the more we advertise, and I think Facebook, by liking things, is very helpful and very effective. The shuttle that we have, I think we need to continue to tell people about that. Shuttle has improved, this is the Weekend Shuttle. It has improved, goes to the commercial areas, to the devil's slide. I think the more people actually get on it and use it, the word of mouth, and it is word of mouth that really is effective. Those kind of things. And I think regarding, just mainly getting it out there and working together on any, any kind of marketing, it's the word of mouth and being here. So, Economic Development Committee is working on that in an In-Pacifica event, which I think will bring more activities. And the more activities we have, the more of a destination we are than the word of mouth. Continue.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be asking each of the candidates for a two-minute re-overview recap, so we can wrap this up. And we're going to start on the end with Victor.
A couple of years ago in Oakland, Jerry Brown was the mayor, and he set a ambitious goal to build 10,000 housing units in downtown Oakland. In the time, since then, that's happened, and downtown Oakland has been revitalized. We need a vision, a goal like that here in Pacifica. And I don't think we need 10,000 units. I think we need something accessible and doable, that we can do in four to eight years, which is building more hotel rooms, 150 to 250 hotel rooms, to create sustainable economic development, to pay for our wonderful way of life here in Pacifica, our police services, our fire services. How do we get these units? We build Beach Boulevard, including the hotel, the boutique hotel. We build new bed and breakfast rooms. There's people who have houses in East Sharp Park that would be perfect for a bed and breakfast. They want it procedure to do that. Airbnb rentals, we need to work with state and federal authorities to capture TOT from those. So, we have these, we can have these new hotel rooms, but how will we fill them? We need to triple our efforts to bring people here in Pacifica. We need to have more events. I wrote a letter to the Tribune about a year ago on capitalizing on Mavericks. There's traffic going down Highway 1 to visit, you know, the various bars and restaurants there. We can have Italians with Dream Machines. We can have our own car show here, like Woody's on the Morph in Santa Cruz, or, yeah, Santa Cruz, where they have, you know, food cars, and all sorts of entertainment for people by the seaside. The goal of sustainable economic development is not to fill our hillsides with houses, but keep our environment great and be financially responsible. Our strong suit is our coastal environment. Let's capitalize on that and be a model for other cities.
Thank you. And we're going backwards in the alphabet, Eric?
Just testing me to see if I knew that.
That's right.
You know, there's an ironic piece of this process of running for office is that you're asking, you're looking to select people who will run a multimillion-dollar business in our community. And you're looking for people who are open, open-minded, who will deliberate, who will listen to the community, who will take in input, who will listen to experts, who will do it in a public, transparent way. And then at the same time, we're also have all these, on the other side of that, we have all these litmus test questions that, I'm not going to vote for you if you agree with this, or you don't agree with that. Truth be told, we're not going to agree on everything. The only person I agree with all the time is my wife. I don't even agree with myself all the time. The challenge is for us to work together, to move the community forward, to listen to each other. This is a complicated job. It requires a high level of expertise and knowledge for us to work together in this community to move forward. You folks are involved, you're interested, and there's a lot of that that needs to be tapped into to move us forward together. And that's why I'm running. I think I can help do that. I think I have the resume that shows I've done it, and can continue to do it. And I appreciate you coming out, and your support for the center. Thank you.
Hello. I got to say, we've all talked about economic development, but actually, being on the city council, it's like doing a puzzle. We could have all these hotels, we could have all that, but what if we don't have people that can afford to live here, to work in the town, and support those hotels? I would look at workforce housing, and would take it in order, because I think that needs to be dealt with. The chief school district lost over four teachers because of the cost of living last year. So you take in, you start getting into losing your workers and everything else if you to support the industry. I fully support the industry, but it is a jigsaw puzzle, and you need experience in order to do that. 14 years' experience on the school board, two years on city council. I'm just now starting to develop the connections, and politics is a people business. I mean, if I came in here and said, you guys are all jerks, you wouldn't vote for me, right? But part of it is dealing with people, knowing how to make connections, at Caltrans, board supervisors, the congestion management committee that I'm on for the county, is develop those relationships to try and start getting more money here in Pacifica. And again, it is a multimillion-dollar corporation. I have the experience of doing that, and I do have the track record. So I would ask for your support in November. Thank you, for October, if you do have some need.
Thank you. And John here?
Financially, I see Pacifica as being in survival mode for the next four years. It's going to be a challenge just to balance the budget and keep the government functioning. Perhaps more importantly, the city must work to regain the trust of voters. Transparency is important, budget forms are a part of that. Citizens should be informed about the important elements of decisions which will affect them. Regarding Highway 1, the widening project, the Caltrans plan for it is essentially a yes or no vote. City council must request funding from the county transportation board. If we're going to have a modified plan, or a new plan, Caltrans will have to go back to the drawing board and redo the environmental impact report. Obviously, if elected, I would vote no on widening, and instead, request funding for alternatives to widening Highway 1, and for other projects that the city desperately needs, like repaving our streets. I think my level-headed approach is right for Pacifica. If you agree with me that the Caltrans plan to widen Highway 1 is a bad plan and a waste of our money, then vote for me in October and November. Thank you.
Teresa?
Communication is a great problem here with our city council. I ought to know, I go to most of the city council and county supervisor's meetings. That's the reason I like to have town hall meetings, because city council cannot answer your questions at the time you're asking them at the podium. But in a town hall meeting, they can. And even though you put in information or request through public records, sometimes you just get no response. To me, that's not an answer. It's either yes or no, or some kind of alternative answer. And what I've discovered, you know, if you're going to run for city council, you should really be attending these meetings. And I urge the public to do the same thing. You may have watched on TV, but you're not picking up an agenda, you're not picking up the consent calendar, and by God, you're going to find out a lot of discrepancies there. One for sure was where they wrote off $47,000 in debt. People that just didn't pay their bills, that's one of them. And transparency, as far as the lease that we signed with the state at the senior center, they violated that by putting those parking meters without getting permission from the state. So, as of August 15, they did not get their lease renewed. Maybe they will, but these are just some of the things that are happening. Or five million dollar spend on consultants. I mean, we have enough talented people in this room that can offer advice. Thank you.
And Citygree?
Yes, again, my opinion is revenue always has been revenue, and we are coming out of a recession for transparency. The fact that this community is very active and involved and questions everything is an asset. And I encourage and plead with the community to always stay attentive and be engaged. And there is a difference between a public hearing and public forums. Public hearing you will have to have, for example, the Caltrans proposition will have to come before council eventually, and that'll be a public hearing where you get to have your three minutes at the podium. I'm in favor of those, but they're not enough. You need public forums. We're having a general plan coming up, we need public forums. You need the opportunity to meet citywide, all of us talk and listen, so that council, your public involvement does affect the attitudes of your council persons. Otherwise, as individuals, we can think we don't all. So, for revenue immediate, we do have an Economic Development Committee hardworking, and one of them is a marketing person. Brent Schreit has come up with this In-Pacifica idea. It's basically to have events here in Pacifica, so that more people will come and get to know that we're here, and will return. Long-term, obviously, developments, we could use more hotels, obviously. We need affordable housing, obviously. We need public transportation. There again, that's going to be public outcry. It's not going to happen unless the public wants it. And for the highway, the congestion management and safety is paramount, and we must have it. And I urge you, I beg of you, to pay attention to the new things that can be done so that we can avoid construction, because businesses, I worry about that. So, marketing, that's where we are, and working together. I would say, we can do this, that is the vision. And I think together, we can do it. We're, we have made changes in the permitting processes, thanks to public input as well. So that part is gone, we don't worry about that.
Yeah, two minutes isn't enough to tell you, you know, closing remarks, or just to listen to all your concerns. So, I encourage you first to reach out to me, or if I can find you your local business, I'll find these things soon, just so we can talk more. But as you can tell, we all have a lot of ideas, and there's a lot that can be done in Pacifica. We're still a young city, you know. There's a lot that we can do, and there's a lot that can be done to make our city a little better. So I'd like to just continue being smart, involving everyone, utilizing our resources. I mean, we have great coastline, a great, our land, our terrain. I mean, we have, you know, our environment is really remarkable. I'd like to listen to all of you, help our local businesses grow. There are challenges that still exist for our business citizen that causes people to open up shop in other cities, and that shouldn't happen. So, I'd like to continue to, you know, be a representative, be supportive of you. My experience is, I do have experience managing budgets, multimillion-dollar budgets. I have experience holding open forums, listening to different people representing over 9,000 people. I think that I, you know, there's a lot of room for me to grow. I think that I like to be on city council to just learn, and to be all of your voice on city council, and I like to represent.
All right, well, thank you very much, our city council candidates. Let's give them a round of applause. And as you can tell, that you are amongst a very, very passionate group of very vested people about the health and vitality of Pacifica, our future, and how we can work together as, we're all in this together, as I said, and always believe, and most of us do here as well. So thank you, all of you, for coming this morning. Again, we'd like to thank Nick's Restaurant, Chuck, for adding my name to the list. And I'd like to thank my staff, Carol, for all that she's done to help make this happen. And not to forget our timekeeper, Darlene Gonzalez, and Jeff Rauer, great chat team. Okay, there is a meeting following this event this morning, so lots of conversations. I'm sure they're going to have it out in the parking lot or out in the lounge. And I do need you to have a wonderful day, and thank you for coming.